Praise the Lord. Good evening, everyone.
Hello, everyone. Please bag your heads. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this evening, for our friends, our colleagues, and our families. Father, tonight I ask a special prayer of protection over the children of our city. Many of them are without food. Many of them are without a safe place to call home. Father, we lift the children of our city to you tonight, and we ask that they feel your comfort and your peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Born and unborn. I'm excited to recognize the Liberty Christian Academy Bulldogs for their amazing season. And back-to-back VSHL Class III State Championships. Going undefeated at fourteen, fourteen and oh this year, and twenty-eight and zero over the last two years is an incredible achievement. A big congratulations to head coach Frank Rocco, his staff, the team captains, Gideon Davidson, Eastern Ware, Ryan Sisney, and James Theo for their hard work and leadership. Coach Rocco being named Region 3C and Seminole District Coach of the Year shows just how much a difference you can make for players, for these players. On behalf of the City of Lynchburg, we are so proud of you. Go Bulldogs! We would like to have a picture with you all. Mr. Rocco?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to give us some words? Yes, sir.
This is Ryan Sisney. He was one of our captains.
Ryan, great Scott. Good to meet you. Praise the Lord. Yes, sir. The whole team. So y'all want me to put this on?
This guy's tall. I don't want to lie.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, brother. Thank you.
Go Bulldogs! Okay. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into three sections: consent agenda, public comment, and general business. The first section is consent agenda. It includes routine items that can be approved by one vote. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please? Yes?
Roadblock council, please split and take them up individually.
By consensus, can we split? So we do. May I have a motion on the first, what is that? Consideration of approval minutes from February eighteenth, city council meeting. So moved? Now the vote, please.
Thank you. Motion passes six-one.
Second, consideration of approvals from February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting. So moved? By consensus?
All right, go ahead and initiate the vote now. Motion passes seven-zero.
Next section is public comments. Speakers have three minutes to talk. If you're speaking for a group, you have five minutes. City council will listen to your comments and may ask city manager to follow up. Citizens often have different opinions. To make sure everyone feels comfortable speaking, there is no applauses, cheers, jeers, or jeers. No intimidation, insults, or disrupt, or disrupt others. Do not use profanity, promote business, or campaign for office. Hear from citizen regarding city budget Deborah Tefker. Trebsker. Deborah Trebsker. She's not here, okay? Hear from citizen regarding building strong community through this, through civil discussion, Katie Yerger. Yegler, 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 Yergler.
My ex-Katie Yergler was in the [inaudible]. Spent a lot of time writing things out, but figured it was probably better just to come up and have a conversation. I'm a third-year law student at Liberty, and I've been living here since twenty-twenty-two. I've been following city council since twenty-twenty-three. And I'm a little nervous. That's why my voice is shaking. Excuse me. I appreciate everything that you all are doing here, and it's really clear that each of you has a really strong passion for different areas of the city and just for all of the citizens of Lynchburg. It's, it's also, over the past year and a half, it's been very evident, there's hostility on council. And, and so I just wanted to come here to encourage more mindful discussion, and one of my professors, I was communicating to him about a, a policy that I wanted to have changed. And he could tell I was very passionate about it. And when I was asking questions to people who opposed that policy, he spoke with me afterwards, and he was like, now, it seems like in, like you have a strong passion for this, but it seems like there's, there's something rooted beneath it that's like anger. And I was, had a lot of anger, and it was coming through in my question. It was coming through in the questions that I was asking to people who opposed me. And instead of, I realized, instead of hearing what they had to say, I was just waiting for that next time to rebut what they were saying, to communicate why, why their beliefs were wrong, or why the policy that they were trying to present was wrong. And I think one of the biggest things that I've learned from that process is the importance of finding common ground in order to actually enact and make change in policy. And that's something that I really would like to urge you all to do some introspection because many of you all have clearly policies that, and clearly passions for certain things to be done in this community. And when you're having these discussions, it seems like you're not actually hearing other people, you're, who are talking on council. You're just...
Thank you.
Yep, sorry.
Representative regarding agent far, agent file department infrastructure, Jamie Maxwell, Lynchburg File Department Association.
That's fine. All right, council, here you are again, but the time, my favorite time of the year. We'll talk about the Asian Power Department Infrastructure. This is a response to the city's CIP plan that you guys heard two weeks ago. Couple of quotes for you. Councilmember Reed said, "It's important to remember," like I said the other, this is paraphrasing, "like I said the other week, when we own properties and buildings that we are the owners of these facilities, that we need to look good. It's a reflection of our city to everyone that comes in, that we don't have properties that look shabby, rundown. Put money into it, make reflect that. It has pride in what we own." All right, pay attention, ma'am. Okay. Councilmember Wilder said, "We prioritize what we do. Come off twenty-nine, come up Gray Street, that's a big thoroughfare, there's a fire station sitting right there at that corner. You drive past it every single day. You want to make the city attractive. You don't want to, you don't want the city to look dilapidated." The city hall, CIP priorities, the city library, very important, twelve million dollars. The city pool, very important as well, eleven million dollars. We have seven fire stations, I'm sorry, eight fire stations. The newest one's nineteen ninety. The other seven made before, nineteen eighty. Seven hundred thousand dollars for, for eight buildings. That's almost laughable. Fire station number one is falling apart. Councilmember Reed said the other day, "We know that these palms are going on, but we're doing nothing about it. The walls are cracking off there. They had to shave the top of the station off because they thought it was going to fall into Madison Street." Again, nothing being done. Floors are in disrepair in fire station number one. Let's go out to station number two. Built in nineteen fifty-six, it is truly nineteen fifty-six inside that building. If I had the PowerPoint presentation, which you guys will get via email, you'll see what it looks like inside that fire station. Inside that restroom, there's no privacy. The ceilings are falling down on top of you as you're trying to use the restroom. Let's go to fire station number five. Built in nineteen seventy-one, and it is truly nineteen seventy-one out there. It is the old building. The firefighters are doing the best they can to maintain them, but again, you guys aren't doing anything. City Hall's not doing anything to make them any better. There were seven hundred thousand dollars put in the budget last year, I believe, seven hundred thousand-ish, to refurbish fire station number five. The lowest bid came in at one point four million dollars. They put an addition on about this wide and about six feet long on the backside of it. The project stopped. That's great. That's great. We truly appreciate that. I'm pretty sure those firefighters enjoy that little bit of space that was created after one forty, one point four million dollars. You know what kills firefighters is cancer. Cancer kills us. When we go to structure fires, the fires kill us. The gear we wear to go to those fires kill us, PFAS. It kills us. Should our fire stations kill us too? Should they? No. And I'm pretty sure this is a council member knows this is about to happen. These are tiles out of fire station number one, fire station number eight. Do you know what that black stuff on the back is? That's asbestos. That is black mystic asbestos. That is glue that is made in the nineteen fifties and nineteen eighties. Fire station number eight, fire station number one. If you go inside those stations, you're going to see there's tiles missing. Firefighters are breathing this every single day. Is it worth it? So we should be, so we should be, we die in the fires? We should die in the station, die wearing the gear? All because you guys up there want to fight over petty stuff, and City Hall doesn't want to support us. At what time, at what point do we have to stop begging? When do we start getting the budget we deserve? I think it's only fair. I thought about passing this along to each one of you all, let y'all, let y'all have it all the way down, then tell you what it was. That's probably not fair to you, because you probably don't want to take this home. No, I'm not going to hand it to you. That'd be dumb. But it was good enough for the firefighters. I promise you it was good enough for them, and it was good enough for y'all. It's absolutely ridiculous. And you guys will get the PowerPoint, I promise you. I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. Hear from group representative regarding support for councilman Greg Berry, City of the Elders. I'm the elder of the city. Could you please state your name and locality, please?
Yes, my name is Greg Berry, and I'm representing the Lynchburg City Elders. To God and His Son, Jesus Christ, be all the praise, honor, and glory. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, and council members. Tonight, I want to express my appreciation for all city council members, but especially for one who has come under grape fire for simply standing up for what is right. Two weeks ago, some women came here to denigrate and disparage one council member. These women say they represent a group called Save Our Schools, which funds, which, which sounds great, but they really want to waste our money and destroy our education system. They remind me of a proverb from Proverbs, chapter thirty, verse fifteen, says, "The horse leech has two daughters crying, 'Give, give.'" The leech refers to an insatiable greed, and that is what we are dealing with. They want to spend every cent we have without any concern for the quality of education. Our schools are not judged on the number of buildings we have, but should be judged on how well we prepare our children for their future. We are failing in this area primarily due to misguided leadership in the past. But our current school board is diligently searching for a new superintendent that hopefully will better reflect our values and goals, that will benefit our children, allow them to be more successful in life. These women referred to Mr. Mitchens as a bully and that he was intimidating them. Good. I spent many years as a law enforcement officer, and on, and one lesson I learned came from George Orwell, who said, "We sleep safe in our beds because rough men stand ready to visit violence on those that would do us harm." In other words, murderers, rapists, child molesters, and other wicked people do not fear soft words or soft people, but they do fear and respect warriors who are willing to take necessary action to protect our community, our families, and especially our children. Thank you, Mr. Mitchens. Marty Mitchens has stood firm in his commitment to the quality of education for our children, not just spending money to feel good. That is merely putting lipstick on a pig. Mr. Mitchens has stood firm for, on accountability for all facets of our government. That is why we need a full, accurate audit. How can you even look at the citizens in the face and say you are doing your job when there is no accountability? Marty Mitchens also wants our public library operated under the direction of a board. With the recent revelations of inappropriate literature that is available in the library, it is obvious that there is an extremist movement right here in Lynchburg that will indoctrinate, groom, and utilize our children for immoral sexual perversions. This has to stop immediately. Marty Mitchens fully supports such a library board, and I fully support Mr. Mitchens. Mr. Mitchens also wants to keep our property taxes at a reasonable rate. I recently received my property assessment, which included the current tax rate as well as a projected equalization rate. Is this a bait and switch, or can we get any assurance from city council that proposed equalization rate will become a reality? I know I can count on Marty Mitchens to do the right thing. Thank you, Mr. Mitchens. One final area that must be addressed refers to the censure of both Marty Mitchens and Jeff Helgson. That censure was based purely on the animus of certain council members against Mr. Mitchens and Mr. Helgson because they attempted to expose blatant corruption right here on city council. This must be corrected. It is a time to shine a light on what has happened in the past so we can clear the path for a productive future. In the past two years, there have been many attempts by citizens, as well as you, Mr. Mayor, to get council members to reconcile, but this has been without success, even though each of you have professed a faith in Christ. In particular, two of you refused to accept apologies simply because you did not think the apologies were sincere. This is unscriptural, and I demand, in the name of Jesus Christ, that you either reconcile with your fellow council members or suffer the wrath of God as stated in Matthew, chapter six, verse first, fifteen. "But if ye forgive not your trespassers, neither..."
Thank you, sir.
"...will ye father forgive your trespassers."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now hear from group representative regarding more and ethical direction of the City of Lynchburg in regards to leadership from the city council. Joshua Pratt, act, action mission. Please restate your name and group representative and locality.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. My name is Joshua Pratt. I'm a pastor here in Lynchburg, I live in Ward Three. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, Mr. Vice Mayor, city council, members of the city staff. In Romans, chapter thirteen, verse one, it says, "Everyone must submit himself to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." The authorities that exist have been established by God. Consequently, he who rebels against the authority is rebelling against what God has instituted, and those who do so will bring judgment on themselves. For rulers hold no terror for those who do right, but for those who do wrong. Do you want to be free from fear of the one in authority? Then do what is right, and he will commend you, for he is God's servant to do good to you. But if you do wrong, be afraid, for he does not bear the sword for nothing. He's God's servant and an agent of wrath to bring punishment on wrongdoers. Government's responsibility is to uphold the law of God and to protect the citizens of the United States of America from anything that is contrary to the word of God. That is your right, that is your role, that is your responsibility. And according to scripture, the good is God's law. It's not feelings, it's not emotions, it's not thoughts, it's not democratic consensus. It's the will of God and His word. Matthew, chapter nineteen, verse fourteen. Jesus said, "Let the little children come to me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of God belongs to such as these." Jesus loves children very much. He loves us all. And he wants children to grow up and know Him. But the children in our city are being suffered not to know Him in public education because this book was banned in nineteen sixty-three from public education. And I see gray hair in this room, and you probably had prayer and Bible in your classrooms when you were children. And that was the standard of our society. Finally, the last scripture that I'm going to close with is Luke, chapter seventeen, and verse two. "It would be better for him to have been thrown into the sea with a millstone tied around his neck than to harm one of these little ones." There are books in the public education system that are profane. They are sexually explicit, and children should never be exposed to homosexuality, which is an abomination before God. Transgenderism, mutilation, they should be encouraged to be who they are, "For God said, 'I made man and woman,'" and they should become one, and they should multiply. That is the way God established our society, established our world, established who we are. This model represents a millstone. And the severity that Jesus says should happen to someone if they harm a little one. City council, stop the harming of the little ones in public school and in the public library. Remove this perversive material from the school shelves. Get it out. It's wrong, it's evil, it, it fosters wickedness in our community. I want you to know that there are many prayer groups in town that pray for all of you, that you would have wisdom, and that you would lead with righteousness, and with love, especially for one another. Thank you for your service to the community. Thank you for being Christians. If you're ever in need of prayer, there are prayer groups that would gladly take you in and pray with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now hear from citizen regarding public safety, Marjorie Johnson. Hello, could you please restate your name?
Good evening.
And locality of residence?
Yes, Mayor Larry Taylor, Vice Mayor, all the council members. I came before you March, uh, in May, uh, twenty twenty-three, May ninth, twenty twenty-three. And what I came before you with was very much disregarded, blatantly disregarded, I might add, because nobody reached out to me. So today, I decided to speak on public safety. On this twenty-fifth day or evening of March twenty twenty-fifth, I come before the council to address my concerns on public safety. So, Ms. Reed, you were the mayor in twenty twenty-three that I saw before the first time. Mayor Larry Taylor, I would like you to take some kind of action this time, at least by reaching out to me, because I've sent several emails pertaining to what I experienced here in Lynchburg. So, in this day and time, we as citizens developed trust with every police department, with every office of executive or, of executive office. And when that trust is broken between the citizens, it's something, because it's a horrific experience you go through. On February the seventh of twenty nineteen, Officer C. and hers changed my life forever. He assorted me. He fictitiously brought up charges on me for assault and battery on a law enforcement officer and obstruction of justice. Now, there's a duty that police officers have, and they are sworn in on, under oath to protect and serve. This particular night, they did not protect and serve. In fact, I lost all of my teeth on the left side from that brutal attack. I'm still suffering mentally from that. So if you see me stumbling or stumbling over my words, it's because I'm nervous right now. So with that being said, I would like to see some kind of... Give me one moment.
Ms., Ms. Johnson, your time is up.
Yes, I know. I can't speak, okay, so I would just like for you to be able to pull the videotapes and examine them yourselves.
Thank you.
So that we can resolve this matter, please.
Thank you. We'll now hear from citizen regarding wisdom for city council, Ronald Stoyer. Mr. Stoyer, could you please restate your name and locality of residence, please?
Ronald Storer, uh, Ward Four, Sandusky. I don't, uh, well, good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, City Council, staff at the courthouse. I don't envy your job. You have a lot of choices and decisions, things you have to go over. But there's one place that I find that it, uh, I can find answers. And in the word of God, Psalm, chapter one, one of my favorite passages. "Blessed, fortunate, prospered, and favored by God is the man who does not walk in the counsel of the wicked, following their advice and example; nor stand in the path of sinners, nor sit down to rest in the seat of scoffers; but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and on his law, his precepts and teachings, he habitually meditates day and night. And he'll be like a tree firmly planted and fed by streams of water, which yields its fruit in its season, its leaf does not wither, and in whatever he does, he prospers and becomes, and comes to maturity. The wicked, those who live in disobedience to God's laws, are not so, but they are like the chaff, worthless and without substance, which the wind blows away. Therefore, the wicked will not stand unpunished in the judgment, nor sinners in the assembly of the righteous; for the Lord knows and fully approves the way of the righteous, but the way of the wicked shall perish." I trust that as Christians, those that have professed Christianity, have a family, a upbringing, of, uh, Christian parents, can appreciate these words, that God expects that a Christian man and a Christian woman will meditate on His word and use that in their decision-making. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Hear from citizen regarding West Point Village rezoning decision, Will Maxon. Could you please restate your name and locality, please?
Yes, sir, uh, my name is Will Maxon, I'm in Ward One. I drive up and down Wigginton Road every day. And I wanted to come and just reiterate my disappointment with, um, the prior meeting, the, the decision that the council made about rezoning of the West Point Village. Primarily, it left me with a feeling of, uh, a really unnecessary feeling of, of corruption on your part. It was inconsistent with decisions that were made that very same night. Um, and, uh, as a citizen, I didn't feel like you were representing me. I think you do, I really feel like you do. And so that, for me, felt like, uh, what's the word, an own goal, you know, a, a really unnecessary, um, that that had to happen. Um, but one of my concerns, the page with the numbers, it's a very simple ROI calc. It can be done lots of ways. It shows that, uh, it doesn't appear to be a very good investment on the part of the city, on the part of my money, the taxpayers' money. Um, as I understand, that number's up to two point nine million now, maybe even up to four million in five years. Um, but had you sent it back to the planning council, you could do an ROI and show us and demonstrate to us that the decision is good for the taxpayers. Um, so that's my disappointment. We're not NIMBs, we're not trying to stop all development, but we feel like you could communicate to us better why this is, um, why this is good for us. Um, one of the things that, um, was presented of why this, despite that ROI is a good investment, is other developers are going to come and chip in. And the problem with me for that is, it was a giant trust me statement. Trust me, they're going to come and chip in. Trust me, we're going to have a certain number of houses, there's no guarantee, a certain type of finishes, there's no guarantee. There's going to be a great walking trail, but connecting two parks, I love that, we all love that, but there's no guarantee. And so that, um, the whole, it's going to be great, just trust us aspect of the decision also left me, I walked away with a real feeling of disappointment. Um, the only guarantee that I did hear is that the traffic on Wigginton Road, um, my road is going to get worse. I don't know what to think about that. My first thought, my one thought is, instead of a stoplight, a traffic circle. And so if you flip the paper over to the picture on the back, it just shows an idea of how to mitigate what's coming and I, and what I see it, I don't see any way to stop it from coming, but at least to mitigate it and make it, uh, traffic calming, not traffic stopping, um, oh, a way to keep traffic flowing, um, and, and I, I'm, of course, I expect it will also affect the price. That's my request, thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Hear from citizen regarding an agenda item, Peter Sepharati. Could you please restate your name and locality, please, sir?
Uh, yes, Peter Sepharati, I'm a resident of Ward One, and I'd like to speak to you about the financial state of the city of Lynchburg, if I could. I've been watching the city's council for a while, as you well know, as well as our school system and its educational results. There's been many discussions in this room about all the many things that this Lynchburg city government needs to do. Uh, other citizens and I have some concerns, and here's a few of them. Roads and other infrastructures don't meet current or future needs and standards. The Joint City Council School Board Committee says our school buildings need over a hundred and ten million dollars of repairs and improvements. Some situations are endangering students and teachers. The Miller Park School can close without over ten million dollars worth of deferred maintenance. The main library needs renovations estimated to cost almost thirteen million dollars. Many LCS students are graduating without a good education. And how about those fire stations? Let's agree on a couple of things. In the past few years, city council and staff have addressed many problems that have been neglected by previous city council members. You've improved conditions and paid for first responders and staff and teachers, and infrastructure, uh, issues have been addressed. And the neglect of serious issues due to poor priorities lays at the feet of those in charge many years before most of you, most of you got your seat up here. So here we are facing expensive inherited challenges which cannot be ignored. We cannot be sure the state and federal funding will be available to help us. Lynchburg is in a financial bind, as you're well aware, as are many homeowners who will be taxed to get us out of the ditch. Now, what are we going to do about this? Two weeks ago, I quoted you from the city council website that says, "All power is concentrated in the elected council." That means that you all, not the experts, will have the finan, the final responsibility for handling the current situation, so please consider some ideas. Acknowledge that the time for business as usual is well passed. Show us that you recognize that changes are needed. Figure out how Lynchburg got into this financial quicksand in the first place. And then, inform citizens about what are the causes of the dilemma, our financial dilemma. Focus on the causes of our problems and not the dilemma, not the symptoms. People need to know that you realize that increased funding to continue down the same path is not the cure for our ailments. Chart out a new path to a better, stronger community. Different proven priorities and policies and transparent decisions that correct past mistakes will show the citizens that you're up to this challenge. And there are a lot of challenges, no doubt. An audit of, uh, Lynchburg finances would be a great place to start. Prioritize all large projects and programs to identify existing projects whose funding can be transferred to higher priority, uh, areas. We can make this a better place to live, and it's going to take some changes. That won't be easy, but we can do it. Thanks for your service to our city, all of you, I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now hear from group representative, representative regarding voting, voting inconsistencies related to rezoning by council members, Jason Kaliva.
Good evening, my name is Jason Kaliva, I am a Ward One resident. And I am here on behalf of Wigginton Road residents to ask city council questions in regards to inconsistent decision-making surrounding future land use applications. At the last city council meeting, there were two rezoning applications. One to rezone, allowing for seven hundred fifty high-density units on Wigginton Road, and a second to allow for the construction of eighteen hound homes on Ward's Ferry Road. Both were met with citizen opposition due to traffic and safety concerns. Council voted four to three in favor of rezoning Wigginton Road. Going against the city planner's recommendation, deny approval, as the development would degrade several intersections to an F, and formal opposition from nearly three hundred citizens concerned about traffic safety. Now, that same evening, council voted four to three against rezoning Ward's Ferry Road, citing traffic, safety, and public opposition. Though, from the video, there were no residents in attendance that spoke that evening, and the city planner recommended approving that rezoning application. We, the residents who are to be impacted by this decision, have concerns about the glare and discrepancies between the council's votes on these two rezoning applications. Mr. Deemer voted against Ward's Ferry Road rezoning, citing public safety and calls from constituents about, quote, "all kinds of issues that are potentially issues." Despite a formal petition signed by over two hundred and sixty residents and about fifteen people speaking in opposition, Mr. Deemer voted yes in favor of rezoning Wigginton Road that same evening, stating that, in reference to Development Corporation, they are, quote, "great people, local people that we trust, and they have our best interests at heart." Mr. Deemer, are the three hundred some odd people in opposition from Wigginton Road, comprising every income bracket, from students to retirees, from tradesmen to doctors, not good people? Do you not trust residents of Lynchburg? I know you can't answer that right now. Based on your remarks, it seems you believe the residents of a community should have no stake in what impacts them. It seems you believe government and corporations know it is best for a community. Last week, Mr. Miss Junes erroneously compared Wigginton to Road, with, uh, Wigginton to Ward's Ferry Road, where he stated he is a resident. He emphasized the need for more housing in Lynchburg, and he said, quote, "We should be in the billsis of building things up," and proceeded to vote in favor of rezoning Wigginton Road. But later that night, he voted in opposition to Ward's Ferry Road, citing traffic and safety and stating, quote, "constituents don't want to see this happen, and it's, quote, 'too much density in too small of a spot.'" Mr. Miss Junes, why did you disagree with the very same concerns we, the residents, made about Wigginton Road? These inconsistencies have left some residents wondering. Is it because the Ward's Ferry Road development would personally impact you? Is it because the Development Corporation for Wigginton Road directly donated approximately seven thousand dollars to your campaign, and who knows what indirectly? Council members, Miss Junes, Deemer, and Timmer, is your vision for our city to recreate the congestion and sprawl of Northern Virginia here in Lynchburg? Why did some members of this council cite the need to pay for upgrades to Ward's Ferry Road in their opposition, but commit to spending taxpayer money from the CIV or CIP fund to upgrade Wigginton Road to support the Langley Corporation? And we saw earlier that that figure has now increased. From our vantage point, the only fiscally conservative action lately from some members of this council is conserving the political status quo, enriching major corporate donors at the expense of the Lynchburg taxpayers. There is a growing group, a growing nonpartisan group that cares about the integrity of this city and wants answers. We do not want to turn Lynchburg into the sprawl of Northern Virginia. We do not want our council run by corporations. We want council to represent and listen to the constituents when we speak out. We will call council out when they cherry pick their arguments. We're not afraid to stand up for answers, and we'll not shy away from fighting for these values. We're not afraid to stand up for answers, and we'll not shy away from fighting for these values. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll now hear from citizen regarding Lynchburg Public Library and CIP, John Fallen. Please restate your name and locality, please, sir.
I'm John Fallen, Ward One. Good evening, council members and fellow people of Lynchburg. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the good done by the Lynchburg Public Library. As you know, the library provides many services beyond loaning books. Perhaps one of our neighbors is thinking of starting a small business and walks into the library to research local codes and find templates for invoices, contracts, and other forms. Another neighbor looking for a job walks into the library and receives assistance with their resume and uses a public computer to find openings and apply. Another neighbor uses library resources to get help with their taxes and reads a local newspaper so they can contribute back to and discover what's going on in their community. A local teen uses the wifi to finish their homework and connect to a live tutor. A family with a small child with dreams of becoming astronaut checks out a telescope to study the stars. Or perhaps the child is more curious and exploring things down here on Earth, and the family checks out a backpack that comes with a free pass to Virginia State Park and naturalist guides. Or maybe the family is like my family, who moved to Lynchburg in 2015 for job opportunities and to be closer to family. And then we started our own family, soon to be parents who checked out books on pregnancy and parenting. And when things got really tough, books on sleep training. A daughter who's been read dozens of books from the library, who now enjoys playing educational games on the computer and finding her own books to check out. A son who has a speech delay, so we read to him even more, and his Mimi takes him to Storytime so he can listen to others as well. A family that's not just saved thousands of dollars in books, audio books, children's books, and more, but has gained a priceless resource in the library. We live in a time when our children can pick up a smartphone and be exposed to unimaginable things. Social media is flooded with bad actors and bots that spread harm and lies. But here, our community, our neighbors, our children, they can go into the library and they can find real answers from real people. They're able to get lost in a book and discover themselves, to learn about history and other people, about new ideas and old, words that inspire them and challenge them. And the library provides a safe place for that to happen, a place that welcomes all, that provides resources for all. The library is a good place. It does good things, and it can do more good if we, if you allow it. The improvement plan would address the needs for renovating the building's infrastructure and integrity, and for updating the library so that it is more modern, efficient, and effective at serving our community. Let us continue supporting and strengthening our library so that we continue supporting and strengthening Lynchburg, each other, and our future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hear from citizen regarding support for the Lynchburg Public Library, Deidra Flavin. Please restate your name and locality, please.
Deidra Flavin, I'm a resident of Ward One. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Um, I'm glad to be here as to speak in support of the Lynchburg Public Library. And as a board member of Friends and Lynchburg Public Library, I listened to the last council meeting and heard some comments and questions that were raised, and I thought it was helpful to offer some information and perspective. First, regarding the question of a library board. As council knows, the Code of Virginia does not require the city of Lynchburg to maintain a separate library board because we operate under a city manager structure. Under Mr. Bender's wonderful leadership, the library is effectively and professionally managed. Creating an additional oversight body will be an unnecessary expansion of city government. On the topic of children's access to library materials, I've heard many of you speak in support of parents' rights to make decisions for their children. The principle is reflected in both the policy and the practice of the Lynchburg Public Library. According to the library's website, children must have a parent or guardian present to register for a library card, and the parent or guardian must sign the application. The library does not monitor or regulate any child's reading, viewing, or internet access. That responsibility rests with the parent, where it belongs. As a mother of three children, ages thirteen, twelve, and seven, and a weekly library user, I can speak from experience. My children browse the shelves in the library, choose the books in interest. I review them, and I, and I guide them in what they read, as well as what they watch and where they go. That's my job as a parent. The library's collection includes a wide range of perspectives, some that reflect my beliefs and some that don't. Rather than feeling threatened by this diversity, I see it as a representation of our community and a direct expression of First Amendment values, the right to read, to access information, and to explore ideas freely and without restrictions. It is also worth noting that the library has an established process for reviewing books if concerns arise. A simple form completed by any citizen initiates a formal review. I inquired as to the number of books that have been challenged recently and learned that not a single book has been, has been challenged through a form in the last decade. If you are concerned about a book, or any citizen is, they can use this process that exists to flag it. The idea that the library is not responsive to the citizens' concerns is simply not true. Anyone who has ever approached a library staff member knows that they are thoughtful, attentive, and committed to serving this community. As council votes to support new housing developments across the city, you are also voting to grow the population that depends on city services. The long overdue redevelopment of the former Sears Building, home to our public library, is essential. This investment will deliver a strong return to taxpayers by enhancing a resource that provides tremendous value at no additional cost to residents. At a time when many families are struggling financially, the library offers free programs and services that are accessible to all. In my own home, the library saves my family thousands of dollars a year. Please support the investment in the library. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now hear from group representative regarding property value, Hope McRory, We the People.
My name is Hope McRory, and I live in Ward Four. Yeah. Um, this has been amazing tonight to hear all this. I'm just so happy that people feel free. I have been to other city council meetings, and I have not felt free. These people really cared, and they were just tolerating us. I have seen other councils, um, make all their remarks and write them down before they even come, before they even listen to us. And I felt so patronized, and I really don't like this at all. And I don't feel this tonight. But one thing is I'm concerned about, maybe your memory is better than mine. I don't see any of you taking notes. I don't see any of you taking notes. Like I said, you know, how are you going to remember all this? Because it's really good, all the things that people are expressing. But, um, the reason I, uh, really wanted to come was to talk about the tags on my property. I'm very concerned about this. I can't believe that my two properties have gained sixty thousand dollars in one year. This means that I am going to have to, um, uh, I just, I really think this is terrible because I think I'm really speaking for a lot of people who haven't realized that you all are open for people to say what they think. And, um, this just blows my mind. That means I'm supposed to convey about ten thousand dollars to you all. And I'm not seeing, um, a real assurance about where the money's going. I really think we need an audit so badly. I mean, we're seeing this stuff in DC where people before abused people in their ability, you know, their having to satisfy taxation. And, um, we need this because you all are very different than the councils before. And we need to know. I mean, it's been so exciting, I didn't even know about the fire departments. Um, they, they have been neglected. This is terrible. And it was not you all. And that's what's happening in DC. It's not these people that are, that are serving now that are having to pick it up. And this is terrible. And this is, this is, you've got to look out for us. I have spoken to all of you, except Mr. Wilder, I think. And I want to tell you, you need to let us keep some money so we can give to your organization. I get letters from you all the time. And if I don't have any money, I didn't need them. And, uh, no, they're, nonprofits are good, but, you know, when we take all our money, you know, they never get enough either. But at least we have a decision about your group. But anyway, I really want an audit. I can't believe, well, I guess I can, considering the people who served on council, that, um, this has gone on so long. I mean, what are they hiding? Another thing I really want to talk about is you all are the elected. The people in DC are the elected. But there's a lot of influence on people who are not elected. And in DC, they have given all this power, the elect, the elected, have given a lot of power um, to other people. I don't want you all doing that. And I know how people that have been hired by other councils know how to get the money from you to do what they want. And, um, I want you to be alerted to that because, uh, you know, we're having to live with less. And you all are, well, city staff are going to have to live with less. Another concern that I have, I've been here a long time. I came in sixty five. I'm very old. I usually fool people, most people anyway. Anyway, um, you know, city council was run by the oh-three old Lynchburgers. And it was very, very different because they really didn't like to spend money. And this was a time when the government was giving it out like crazy. And, uh, that's why we would have had the academy years before, I could tell you about that later, if they had taken it, but they didn't want to be, uh, I want, uh, what's the word, um, they didn't want DC to control them. And this is a sort of good idea. I had a car that I had, okay.
Thank you.
I'll come again. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We'll hear, hear from citizen regarding city budget, Ms. Deborah Trebsger. I mean, Trebs, Trebs, Trebsger, Trebsger, Trebsger.
Trebsger, you got it right. Yes. So my name's Deborah Trebsger, Ward Two, and I'm a mother of six and a grandmother of seventeen. My children were raised on the Word of God as absolute truth and salvation as a gift of God through Jesus Christ. But my heart is heavy tonight for children of the next generation who don't have those same advantages and who are growing up in a culture that seems to have lost its way. I think largely because the churches, who should be the moral guardians, the watchmen on the wall, seems to have lost confidence in the Word of God and seem to have, uh, lost confidence in the American, in American values of, you know, the biblical, our beautiful heritage that was built on biblical principles of the value of the individual, the rule of law, the, um, justice for all, generosity. Not perfect, but exceptional in the world. I lived in Communist China for nine years, and every day I ran into people who would have given anything to come and live in this country. So I found this book in the library this week. It's called, When Aiden Became a Brother. So in this book, a little girl decides that she feels like a boy. She talks to her parents, and they agree that they've made a mistake, which they correct by changing over everything in Aiden's life to boys' things. And in the end, mama has another baby, and Aiden becomes a brother. This ideology seems innocent enough, but it runs directly contrary to science, first of all, which says that every chromosome in Aiden's body is a girl chromosome. But more, it runs contrary to the Bible, the foundation of our culture. It was, this ideology was created by the father of lies, the enemy of everything good, true, and beautiful. But especially, it attacks the image of God, who made man in the beginning, male and female. My heart is heavy because when this issue was raised, the last city council in the city of churches, there, it was left largely unchallenged. In the name of tolerance, I think we capitulate to the wicked, bizarre ideology that's baffling and destroying our kids and attacking the image of God in them, while those who do have the courage to stand on the Word of God are silenced by the tolerant. And, um, by the way, who are the same ones who have banned this book from public schools since nineteen sixty-three? One of my heroes, Frederick Douglass, who was born a slave but became a foremost advocate for abolition in the eighteen hundreds, uh, said, "The whole of my politics is this, that righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is reproach to any people." So I call on the city council to set a commission for checking out books, library books, to be the guardians of our city.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next section is general business. It includes new items for discussion. Consideration adopting the resolution of proven and relocated, relocation of Lynchburg City Council work session meeting to second floor training room for the remainder of tw- twenty twenty-five calendar year. This items was discussed during last week's work section. Ms. Finney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as you know, uh, last work session, the city manager engaged you all on what it would take to stream our committee meetings. That's live stream our committee meetings. One of those changes is, uh, moving our work session to where we hold those committee meetings. We are scheduled to be there through the rest of budget season, the second floor training room. Um, that gets us to the May sixth. On May thirteenth, we are moving back down here. So what is in front of you is a resolution to suspend rules procedure, particularly for where our location is for work sessions. Um, this just gets you to December ninth, which is our last meeting of the year, where we'll move, um, so I'm sorry, so May, from now until December ninth, we'll be up in second floor training room, where we can stream, um, the committee and work session seamlessly. Um, as you all know, in July, council sets forth their calendar year for the next year. So this July, coming up, we'll discuss, uh, twenty twenty-six calendar and the location for that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Yes. Yes, and the motion that I'll make is that we adopt this resolution, but change the end date through the end of June because if we're going to be revisiting our calendar and changing our rules of procedure, or revising the rules of procedure, we're going to have a resolution that's going to be kind of effective against a different set of rules and procedures. So if we're going to do this, then we can update our rules of procedure in June as well. Does that make sense?
It does. I'm looking at our city council to see if we are able to do this.
So, and, uh, I guess what I, what I'll offer councilman missions is, um, we're essentially correcting what we did last July. When we come for this coming July, it'll be to set the calendar year meetings for the year twenty twenty-six. So if we adopted it as presented, we'd, we'd really be okay revisiting the rules of procedure in July anyhow. And certainly, to address your concern, we could add some language in there that this won't affect R twenty-five, whatever number this is. That way it'll be clear, your, your concerns noted when we do it in July too.
I just think that if we're going to be revisiting the rules of procedure, we shouldn't be passing something today that could be fixed through amending our rules of procedure, which we're naturally going to do anyways. So if you say we do that in July, then I would offer to update this and where it says December ninth, change that to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, on number one and number two. And I'll make that as a motion to adopt this resolution, uh, beginning May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Mr. Timmer, second.
Speak to you, sir.
No, I, that, that's fine with me.
Is there any more discussion? Cast your vote.
I understand that now. Thank you. The motion passes seven zero.
Next item, consideration of adopting resolution accepting the return of real estate, of real estate from Lynchburg City Schools specifically to Heritage Elementary and Heritage High School. This items was discussed during business briefing on March eleventh. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Discussion?
I'll, I'll speak to the second. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I think this is a, a great thing that we're doing. It's, um, just, just so people understand what this is about. And this is about the, the Heritage Park, which is, uh, a park in Ward Three. Believe it or not, such a thing exists. There is a public park in Ward Three. It's behind Heritage High School and actually sits behind the old, where the old Heritage High School was, for the people that have been here for a minute and understand where that building sat on that lot. Um, there's currently an athletic field down there. Um, and, you know, there's a nice amount of acreage down there, and the people of Ward Three really haven't had a public park as far as I can remember. And I, you know, I see some folks, some old timers in here from around the city that, uh, that, that understand that. And this is just really a huge opportunity of moving that, uh, real estate back to the city, um, so that we can properly improve that area and actually start investing in, um, parks and recreation in Ward Three. And I'll tell you what, this gentleman right here, I have so much respect for you and what you're doing with trying to bring back the revolution of youth sports in Lynchburg. And this is a key piece of that. That's what we need. We need more stuff for these kids to do, right? So they're out of the streets, so they're out of trouble. And this is just a great opportunity for us, uh, as a city to invest in Parkland Rec on that side of town. So I thank you for, uh, bringing this forward.
Mr. D.
I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, thank the city manager for this. Like, relatively new here, but Ward Three is, uh, definitely, uh, on top of my list every time I walk in this room and sit behind this dais. Thank you, uh, councilman missions for speaking eloquently about what it is and what it means to the people in Ward Three. Um, we've been promised a lot of things since annexation. I've been there that long, and this is actually a promise, uh, that's being kept all these years later. Uh, I'm excited about it. Uh, I'm not through with you yet. I think there's opportunities for other, uh, things, but Heritage Park needs more space. It's, you can walk around the whole thing in about, uh, ten minutes, uh, but this addition will make that a little bit, uh, better. And my dog Sophie thanks you.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you. And I think it's important for us to make investments in my, in our community, such as Heritage Park. You know, so many things in Lynchburg, we talk about the quality of life, and it's so important to have the quality of life. You can't just do this, or you can't do that. You need to have the whole quality of life, like walking trails, like, uh, parks, like recreation, um, infrastructure, like the downtown riverfront property we're doing as well. So it's important for us as a community to continue to attract people to want to come and live in Lynchburg and grow in Lynchburg, to have parks like this, that they say, "I like that quality of life in Lynchburg." So thank you to Parks and Rec. I'm glad we're making an investment in that area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? No more discussion? Please cast your vote.
I understand that now. The motion passes seven zero.
Consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the FY twenty twenty-five city federal state aid fund budget appropriating seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars for support of Lynchburg Adult Recovery Court docket to address public health crisis. This item went before finance committee earlier today, and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Mr. Missions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, is Taylor here? Taylor, would you like to come up and kind of brief everybody on what, what this is? So this is Taylor Jones. Taylor Jones is our Adult Recovery Court Program Director. I, I apologize for not getting it right upstairs.
No, it's no problem. Um, good evening, council members. Um, so the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services has awarded us seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars in SOR funds, um, for this upcoming year. We plan to use, um, a good bulk of that for recovery housing for those that are in need of transitional housing. Um, we plan to use some for bus passes and contracted transportation for those who do not have reliable means of transportation, um, incentives for participants when they're doing well in the program or meeting, uh, and exceeding expectations, planners for the participants to keep track of all their appointments, and registration for two staff to attend our national conference.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as this comes with, uh, there's, there's no fiscal impact for us here. There's no local MASH as well. Um, and this does not require a second, and I will motion that we adopt this.
Is there any more discussion?
I have no discussion. Thank you, Taylor.
More discussion? Mr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you. Amazing in our community to support those who may have some addictions of their nature. And I love to see how our community works together to do, to, to go to the community court, I believe, and to have some training session with persons who have some addictions and things of that nature. And it's so wonderful to see how our community, all of us, come together to support them. They give them a certain incentive, they give them family support, and it gives them resources as well, like job training, some other resources they connect them to with our community. So I love to see that. It is amazing program. I really commend our judges for getting involved in that, because they have to give the okay to do that project. So I really commend our judges, our couple of attorneys, for working together for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Please cast your vote.
I understand that now. The motion passes seven zero.
Consider, consideration of adopting resolution authorize city managers to execute a memorandum of understanding with Roads to Recovery, Inc., and consideration of introducing the resolution for FY twenty-five city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating a hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars for the purpose of providing funds to establish and deliver withdrawal management services. This item went before finance committee earlier today, and I would defer to the committee of that chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The chair of that committee, Mr. Missions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as, as, uh, as the mayor said, this came before finance committee, um, this is, there's a lot of moving parts here, and I think that Donna Witt is going to explain them best. If you want to come explain, uh, what exactly it is we're doing here with this MOU and, um, where these funds are coming from that we're appropriating.
The city receives opioid abatement funds from the state. Um, they come in three ways. They come as an automatic, um, deposit to us each month. Um, and those we have asked council to appropriate for the adult recovery program, and which you all just heard is going very well. That's a separate pot of opioid monies that you've just appropriated for, um, Taylor's program. And then, um, we get another distribution from the opioid association or the opioid authority that, um, they set aside and hold at the state that we have to apply for. It's actually allocated to the city, but we have to do it, um, access those funds through an application process. So Roads to Recovery came to me and asked if there could be funding. They're working in concert with Horizon, and, um, they will establish an eight, um, eight-bed facility that will work in connection with Horizon to be able to provide that opioid abatement. And so that's what these funds are tonight. It requires an MOU because the, the funds will pass from the city to the Roads to Recovery program. So, um, this is to allow the city manager to sign that MOU and to appropriate the funds. The third part of funds, um, is a competitive grant at the state level. Um, council appropriated four million dollars to Horizon. Um, I was able to work with them, and we were able to access two million of those funds, um, to come from the opioid funds. Um, I told them in finance committee, these funds have more strings than Pinocchio. It's very difficult to spend these funds. So we're very appreciative of these great organizations that are helping us keep these funds in our community to help our citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Um, with that, um, I do have a question. Mr. City Attorney, can we do this as one, because it's two different resolutions, or should we separate?
I would suggest doing them separately.
Okay.
Given they're two different subjects.
All right. With that, I'll move that we adopt the first resolution to authorize the city manager to execute MOU with Roads to Recovery Incorporated.
Yes, I, I have to make a disclosure. I, I'm a contractor with, uh, Roads to Recovery, so I have to abstain from this vote. Because I don't want y'all to get funny. Yes, sir.
Just in a, really, they'd get nothing by this, but, but just to be safe, I am on the rise behavior else. I stand nothing to gain by engaging on this matter. I can entertain it, uh, independently. With that being said, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, this is great, but, um, didn't we just get into a bit of a kerfluffle over sending money directly to nonprofits?
DLA and also the Lynchburg Business Lines.
So I'm, I'm struggling to understand how this is okay. And this may not be a question you can answer. I'm struggling to see how this is okay and that's not. Is it because of the MOU is more limiting and it can only go to certain things? Help me understand. Like, I'm trying to understand if, if we're trying to rein in the dollars we're sending directly to nonprofits, even though it's a great cause, I, I want to make sure we're doing it right. Like, because in my five and a half years now on council, I'm not sure of any other nonprofits we've given money to directly other than those two. So this is a new one for me.
Well, um.
How about I ask you a question? Maybe it's easier for it to respond.
We've tried to spend these dollars by city departments, and because of the strings on this money, that it has to be used specifically, very specifically for opioid abatement and recovery. So, um, we're very fortunate to have good organizations in our community that help us spend these funds to help our citizens. So if we put this out for an RFP, there are a lot of national nonprofits who would love to have this money to spend in their programs, but it would not be spent in our community.
Totally.
So we're trying to work with our local nonprofits that specifically work with recovery programs.
Certainly. So what I'm hearing is, and tell me if I'm misunderstanding, we did send this to an RFP and Roads to Recovery did-
We did not. We did not send this through an RFP because we knew what we would get. Um, Roads to Recovery actually came to us and asked if we, if all of our opioid abatement funds had been appropriated for other uses. And because we had this, um, second pot of money that has to go through an application process, we had not found a program that could use those funds. So it actually opened up an avenue for us to work with them.
I get it. Is there any understanding that this should have gone to an RFP regardless? Because we are talking, and I know there's strings attached, there's strings attached to federal monies, all this stuff. This is nearly two hundred thousand dollars. We're talking about appropriating to a nonprofit that did not go through an RFP process. And listen, I'm all behind it. I'm not trying to be a stick in the mud, but if we're good, if we're going to, and I think we should be more, hey, let's, let's make sure this is done as thoroughly as possible. This is a two hundred thousand dollar check we're sending to another corporation, even though it's a nonprofit.
So to make the argument that, in, in this instance, the RFP process was the application to the state pool for the money. Um, they, they're the ones that get to, uh, wh- while the money is earmarked for Lynchburg, right? They're the ones that are ultimately making the decision on what's an appropriate and, and, and inappropriate use. So, uh, this wasn't us just taking money that we had unfettered access to, giving it to Roads to Recovery. This is what, this was us partnering with them, uh, through an application process to access a very difficult, very limited pool of funds that the, that the state then reviewed in depth, determined it met their, their standards, and ultimately, um, you know, okayed the, the funding. So that the RFP process in a way, but it, it, I always think of it more as a grant application process to the state.
I guess what I'm driving at is like, but there was, if, if there was another entity out there in Lynchburg that could have done what they're proposing to do, they wouldn't have known about this opportunity because Rhodes came, rightly so, came and said, hey, the motion on board of the city manager to, uh, do an MOU. It's actually not the appropriation of the hundred and ninety-three thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars. I move that we call the question and act on the vote to authorize the city manager to do the MOU. Mr. Mayor, I would object. May I state my objection?
Yes.
My objection is if we're empowering the manager to start the MOU, then we have an obligation to fund the MOU. And that's why I'm raising all this under the MOU, so I can understand what I'm appropriating. Does that make sense? So I, I hear you, and I, I would appreciate just trying to suss it out. That's all. Uh, but if you want to move on, we can. I don't want to be forced to vote no on something because I am trying to understand. Two hundred thousand dollars, we're looking to appropriate to a nonprofit.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think you could give Councilman Frouting a little bit of leeway. So the, uh, these two resolutions, even though we're doing them separately, you know, they are connected in some fashion. The MOU does describe a process for appropriation of money. You know, certainly if, if the councilman wants to ask how we, we came to Roads to Recovery, I think that's a fair question.
If it makes you feel better, I do have another nonprofit reaching out to me that I'm gonna see if what they have, um, actually can apply these rules to and be able to help them as well. So this is, it's really kind of been that type of process.
I'll wait for the mayor to make a direction.
Do you need more clarity?
I'll conclude. My conclusion is, I, I'm all for being more critical on where we and how we appropriate things to nonprofits. It's the first instance I've ever come across it, because the LRBA is done through the budget, that's turned, done through the economic development line item. So I don't have a direct up or down vote on that. The DLA, I forget where that is. It might be also economic development. So I've never had a straight up or down vote on sending money directly to a nonprofit like this outside of contractual obligations that were required to do. This is very new. And, and I'm, it's wonderful. It needs to happen. I'm just trying to make sure we're doing this in the most, uh, transparent way, not indicating we haven't, but it's the first time we've done it. So I, I do have hesitation with how it's been presented. If anyone else wants to offer feedback or commentary, feel free. I'll stop, uh, occupying the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just, just to be clear, the way that I'm reading this and the way that I understand what you presented to us earlier is that, that this is, there's more funds left available for us to access if more people come and apply with things that, right? And, and what happens if we don't use these funds?
There has not been guidance. These funds are coming to us through twenty thirty-nine. So, and there is not been guidance. What happens if you don't spend your money by a certain date? That's correct. These are settlement funds from the opioid lawsuit that's been ongoing. In fact, we just had a couple of more, um, companies get sued and join this lawsuit that will be receiving a little more money.
So, um, I appreciate what you're doing, trying to, you know, find programs that, that work, because you talked about how the strings were attached. I think you said something about vending machines? What, what did you say?
Oh, yeah. Well, that one, the only ways we've- Well, that one, the only ways we've found that, I mean, and this is substantial money. The direct money come to us through 2029 is about, is just over $2 million. But the only thing that between the fire chief, the police chief and I, we could figure it out is we could put Narcan vending machines on corners. Not sure that's really what we want in our community. But so we really, it's very difficult to spend these funds in a very, and we want them to be spent in a meaningful way for our citizens.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly, I really appreciate Mr. for all these remarks and his echoing. Also, Mr. Missions' sentiment when it comes to financial scrutiny and how that applies. A number of citizens have brought up the question of the Audit Committee, which is my understanding that it's under the charter. That may be an option as far as long-term way of addressing some of these things together as a council. But I appreciate leveraging these funds and the opportunity that we have before us. Thank you.
Mr. Fora?
Just further clarifying for the record, on page two of the MOU, where one of the, in the middle, it's not itemized, but there's a warehouse clause that does state point number one to execute a grant application for programming service costs for the FY 25 in relation to the project amount of $193,000. So the MOU is directly related to a financial component. So I just wanted to offer for.
It is.
I just reiterate, Mr. Timmer said that, you know, I wanted to be fair and I appreciate Mr. Foral to make sure if there's other organizations that want to participate in this, that it's kind of hard for us to spend a lot of money trying to promote this. So everybody knows it. And then we still end up with just one person that meets the requirements. I love the organization. Keep working on their buildings, sir. I think we also makes a lot of sense of what Ms. Timmer said about an audit. Because if afterwards there is some sort of issue with the way the money is spent, the Audit Committee would be the appropriate and traditional way across Virginia and almost every locality, they have this Audit Committee that is able to go back and look at it and say, okay, you know, was it spent the way it was supposed to be spent? And I would really like to see Lynchburg move forward with establishing that Audit Committee. I'm not sure why it ended exactly, but I think it's a good idea and I'd like to get it back.
Well, and I have staff that will be reviewing how these funds are spent to make sure that they're spent in compliance the same way we do with CBDG funds and also with the Horizon funds.
Thank you, Ms. Witt.
One final question if I may?
Yes. Forgive me. One final question. Maybe a year ago, a year and a half ago, I don't quite remember. We did appropriate dollars related to the abatement fund without going through a nonprofit in the past. Am I correct on that?
No. The only opioid that we've
I remember a vote like about a year ago.
We have, we have come to council and asked them to appropriate some of the direct distribution funds to the Adult Recovery Court. So council has done that.
And we did that tonight.
Well, that was a different pot of opioid funds, but it was opioid funds. But it wasn't the city's opioid funds. That was another program.
It turned around with the amount of opioids being thrown around.
It's a lot.
I'd like to call a question.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. My computer down.
Mine too.
Y'all talk too much.
The motion passes six one. Did you?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you want to recast that because you said you were going to abstain?
Yep. All right, I'll go ahead and reset that vote.
It's been so long since you've said that.
Yes.
I'll keep you on track, sir.
The motion passes five one one.
Mr. Mayor? I'll move that we adopt the second resolution to amend the FY 2025 City Federal State Aid Fund Budget and appropriating $193,422 for purposes of providing funds to establish and deliver withdrawal management services.
Yes. Is there any discussion?
I have no discussion.
Please cast your vote.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes five one one.
Consideration of introducing a resolution to amend FY 25 City Federal State Aid Fund Budget appropriating $36,705 to purchase computer equipment for Lynchburg Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the Lynchburg Office of the Commonwealth Attorney. This item went to Finance Committee earlier today, and I will defer to the Chair of that committee, Mr. Missions.
Thank you. Chief Zudema, would you like to come up and tell us what we are purchasing with this $36,705?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This is an annual grant. There's a word to the city. It's split between the Sheriff's Office, Police Department, and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. $31,070 will be used at the Police Department to upgrade memory and computers as well as purchase some new computers. The Sheriff's Office will use this to purchase a copy machine and document management station. And the Commonwealth Attorney's Office will use this to purchase a laptop and related accessories. There is no local match. We have it answering questions.
And I don't have any questions. This came before Finance Committee, as you said, and passed unanimously. And I move that we adopt the resolution.
Is there, is there any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes seven zero.
Item number 24, second reading, consideration of adopting ordinance number zero dash 25 dash zeros two two, amending FY 25 Water Capital Project Fund Budget and appropriating $10 million, 10 million, $25,194,000, million dollars, whatever, for the lead copper water service project line. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This, as stated, this is the second reading, so it came before you before. This is the appropriation that tied to the funding that was approved last council meeting. And this is money that will be used for federally mandated lead service line inventory and replacement. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for Mr. Mitchell? No? Any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Please cast your votes.
Just looking for a motion?
Any discussion?
Y'all have been before us every week again and again, going through the details of this. So thank you. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Please cast your vote.
All right, initiating vote now. The motion passes six one.
This meeting is adjourned. Our next scheduled meeting will be held on April 8th, City Hall, second floor.